Good evening, and I'd like to welcome everybody to the June 13th River Falls City Council Meeting. First thing we'll do is stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can we have a roll call please, Kristy?
Bierstedt.
Here.
Bjork. Downey.
Here.
Gagne.
Here.
Morissette.
Here.
Odine.
Here.
Watson.
Here.
Okay, next we have approval of the May 23rd minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval of the minutes from the May 23rd meeting.
Second.
And also the May 9th closed session minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry, somebody's ahead, way to go. Somebody's paying attention, way to go, hell. Okay, I got first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Next we have approval of the bills with Mr. Gagne.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval of the bills in the amount of $1,782,093.42, subject to the comptroller.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now is the public comments and petitions, if anybody has in the audience anything they'd like to talk about, now would be the time. Oh, come on up. Sign in, there should be a pen up there to sign in and let us know who we are.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and members, Council members and staff. I'm Maureen Ottwell, and I'm the Board Chair of the St. Croix Valley Habitat for the Humanity. And I am here to speak tonight again on behalf of our entire board. I apologize again on behalf of Habitat Board for allowing the lack, or allowing a misunderstanding between our board and the city, reach a point where the city has had to authorize the calling of our note as you did in your last board council meeting. The current board fully accepts that is responsible for these past actions, agreements, and debts incurred by the past boards and executive directors of our organization. In addition, we apologize for failing to make payments over the last year on the generous loan provided by the city, and doing that without explanation. I believe the proposal you have before you to consider in your closed session tonight will allow the Habitat to return to good standing in our repayment of the loan, and will also be the first step that we take in restoring your confidence in us as an organization, and I hope for the community of River Falls as well. The proposal is, I think, generous to the Habitat in that it gives our organization some breathing room to take concrete financial steps, to not only bring us up to date in the loan repayments, but also to restructure financially so that we will be sustainable into the future, and we can get back to our job of provide, our mission, our core mission of building sustainable, affordable housing in the St. Croix Valley, especially in Pierce and St. Croix Counties. The Habitat Board has reviewed this preliminary memorandum of understanding and agrees to the financial obligations and the timeframe outlined in the proposal that you'll decide on tonight, or that you'll give, you're going to be discussing tonight. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Maureen. Okay, anybody else in the audience, come on forward.
My name is Greg Peters, and I'm the President of the River Falls Baseball Council, and on behalf of the RFBC, I would like to say thank you to the city for all the help and advice they gave us when we put on the baseball game for the St. Paul Saints in May, and we made a little picture of the event with the crowd, and just wanted to present it publicly to the city. In addition to that, I also wanted to say, I've been involved with other organizations in town, Girls Youth Basketball, and Optimist Club, and the Chamber of Commerce, and the city has always been very helpful and willing to, they're a team player, and how are, you know, how are they going to help out, and what's best for the, for the community as one. And so with it, on the plaque, it just says, presented in appreciation to the city of River Falls, and it says, together everyone achieves more, and the T-E-A-M is, you know, bigger font, but, who do I, I'll just, just wanted to say thank you.
Greg, go back out there, they'll take a picture of you. There you go.
Thanks a lot.
Appreciate it, thanks Greg.
Come back.
Otherwise, we will move on, actually, we'll move on to public hearing, we'll close the council hearing, and open up the public hearing on the annual liquor license and beer license renewals. Does anybody in the audience have anything they'd like to say about this? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, and reopen the council hearing, and we'll move into suggested motions for the, for the granting of the renewals. I think Mr. Morissette had something he'd like to ask first?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'd like to ask, I'd like to ask the representative of the River Falls Baseball Council to come back up, if you could, and I'll ask him my usual questions.
Explain, explain to everybody why.
Every agent that changes or becomes an agent of a liquor license, I feel strongly that they need to, they need to answer three questions, and I'll ask you those questions now, Greg. Do you understand the role of an agent?
Yes.
Do you understand that if a liquor, liquor license infraction occurs, even if you're not on the premises at the time of occurrence, you're responsible?
I do, yes.
And have you taken your, have you taken your responsible bartender server's license?
Yes.
What did you get on that score? Hundred percent.
Hundred percent.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
One other thing we do with, with all the other beer licenses and liquor licenses, I take a quick little tenants, make sure whatever license we're voting on tonight, there's somebody here, so, obviously Greg's here for River Falls Council, or for the River Falls Baseball Council. Lazy River.
Pat's here.
Pat's here. Say la vie.
Don't see her.
Say la vie is not here. So we will not be, what's the easiest way to do that, we will not be voting on them tonight?
Just amend the motion to not include that license.
Okay, and hometown liquor.
I don't see Michelle here either.
Nope, same with them. Okay, so, on we go. First suggested motion is, grant renewals for Class B beer licenses contingent that all licensing requirements are meant at the time of issuance, and this would be for the River Falls Baseball Council Incorporated. That's it.
Mr. Mayor, I make that motion.
I'll second.
Mayor and Council, I think you also, do you have Lazy River in that one, or is that a separate one?
That's separate.
That's, that's the next one.
Sorry, I want to make sure you didn't forget somebody.
Nope. So we got a first and a second, any questions or comments from the council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the next one would be, grant the combination Class B liquor and Class B beer licenses contingent, and all licensing requirements being met at the time, and this would include just the Lazy River Bar and Grill.
Mr. Mayor, I make that motion.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and the next one is, grant the combination Class A liquor and Class, huh?
She's not here, so I don't think we can do it.
Oh, that's it. Okay, sorry. We'll move on to consent agenda. A is a resolution awarding bid for Lake George Trail, this would be from Family Flesh to Walnut Street. This resolution award the bid of the, for the Lake George Trail to BS Construction, and this project is in the 2017 CIP and in the budget. Three is a resolution approving medical director agreement. This resolution approves a three-year agreement with Emergency Care Consultants PA for the services of metal director, medical director for the River Falls EMS Services. B is a resolution authorizing 2017 chip sale program. This resolution would authorize staff to retain St. Croix County Highway Department to, to perform the 2017 chip sale program at an estimated cost of $182,500. And the last one is a resolution authorizing 2017 and 2018 manhole rehabilitation project. This resolution award the project to HydroClean LLC for $91,925, which is the lowest bid. This is below the budgeted amount for the two-year budget, and is funded by the Sanitary Sewer Fund. Does anybody want to poll anything? Otherwise, I'll take, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, we approve consent agenda items two, three, four, and five.
Second.
Questions or comments on anything? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance number 2017-13, this is an ordinance to repeal and replace regulations related to fences in Title 17 zoning of the municipal code, this is just the first reading. This ordinance will repeal and replace regulations related to fencing, as our current ordinance is incomplete and outdated. This is the first reading, the second reading and disposition will be June 27th. Does the council have any questions? Okay, move on to ordinance 2017-14, this is an ordinance to repeal and replace Section 17.72 for the PU, the planned, you two, oh, I'll start again. The planned unit development in Title 17 zoning of the municipal code, there again, this is the first reading, this ordinance will repeal and replace regulations related to planned unit developments. This is the first reading, the second reading will be June 27th. Does the council have any questions on this? Yes?
On my first reading, I noticed that the city staff had made a suggestion after the plan commission had reviewed this, that PUDs no longer come to the council for approval. And I'd like to know why, so if someone between now and the second reading can give us a reason for that.
I think, I think I can clarify that right now, it was, it was originally in there as a public hearing at the city council, and the intent was to bring it to the city council in a resolution form, not with a public hearing, because recent PUD approvals did not have a public hearing, or that's not what we've been doing, we've been, public hearing at the plan commission, and then not one at the council, but approval by the council.
Okay, that helps, thank you.
Okay, anybody else have any questions? Okay, we move on to reports. Our first report is a landfill update, and our city engineer Reed, Mr. Omski, will give us a little introduction to this.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. We wanted to give you, I mean, no news is good news when it comes to landfill, a closed landfill, but we want to give you some news on this, so it's been a number of years, some of you may not be aware of the landfill, we wanted to give you an update on this, so Ron Frainer is here from GHD, along with Chuck Aaron's, they've been taking care of our monitoring and environmental needs on landfill for longer than I've been in the city here, and they have a good wealth of background, and can help you understand what's going on out there, what's happened, where we're going in the future.
Can you pull up that, oh, yeah.
Let's get that up here.
Reed's an IT guy.
Yeah, that's, that's, let's see if we can get it up here, there we go, and.
Thank you, we appreciate the opportunity to give you an update on the landfill. I'm a environmental engineer, registered in the state of Wisconsin, and 13 other states, I, this is the thing that I do for a living, I'm a landfill engineer, and Chuck Aaron's, who's with me, if we have any questions on hydrogeology, he's here to answer those questions. To give you a flavor of the background, we, we work on the two new Richmond landfills, the Toma landfill, the Eau Claire landfill, the Wassa landfill in, in Wisconsin, and I've got about another 50 throughout North America. And this landfill, you know, the, the thing about landfills is that no matter what you put in them in the 60s and 70s, some household hazardous waste gets in there, and there's, as Mother Nature, it percolates, the rainfall and snow melt through the waste, and creates groundwater contamination. So what happened here is pretty much what happens at most landfills in this, that were in the 60s and 70s. And so on the screen, just to orient you on County Road, I'll use the cursor here, the landfill is located here on County Road FF, this is the comforts of home facility, downtown obviously is here, so it's, it's located outside of town, there's the Birch Cliff subdivision here, and so the landfill itself is 16 acres in size, it was closed in the 70s, it was studied in the 90s, and we did some of the early studies, and came up with the remedy for the site, and we worked with the DNR, the current regulatory process is, is to close and, and monitor the site, so the fix on the remedy, or the remedy for the landfill or the fix, was completed in the early 90s, which involved putting a clay soil cap over the landfill and a venting system to let the methane go through the cap. And, and since that cap has been put on, the groundwater has gotten better over time. It takes decades, it takes decades for a problem to develop, and it takes decades for the problem to go away. We've seen a very steady decline in the contamination, the water underneath the landfill is not used for drinking immediately around the landfill, in Birch Cliff, people are on private wells. We've sampled every single home repeatedly, and the DNR actually came to us a few years ago and said, you don't need to monitor all those homes, there's a few here, we'll keep an eye on, and so we monitor three homes once a year, and we, there's some monitoring wells around the landfill that we monitor once a year, and every year, it's the same old information, it's, it's good, no news in our business is good news, and it's stable, we, we look for stable or decreasing situation in terms of concentrations, and, and so we're happy to report that everything's good. The level of effort that goes into taking care of this landfill, the city maintains, maintains the fence and the mowing, we come out one or two days a year to do the monitoring, and we write a report to the DNR. Pat Collins at the DNR is out of Baldwin, he's the same engineer that we're, tech person we work with at the DNR, both New Richmond landfills, and he's very easy to deal with, and so everything is good, and Reed mentioned that there, the city's thinking about perhaps building a dog park on the landfill, I want to tell you, that's a great use, New Richmond has one of those, if you ever want to go take a look at it, it's, it's really a well-functioning, low-cost dog park. If you want to get a little more elaborate, we put a $5 million soccer complex on the Wassa landfill a couple of years ago, but I don't know that you have that in your budget, so, at this point, I'd like to open it up for any questions people have about the landfill.
Anybody have questions?
In terms of the monitoring you're doing for the, the three houses, and you mentioned that the, you know, the levels of contaminants had been stable and decreasing, are those levels within state regulated guidelines for drinking water, or what's the, kind of the status on that? Yeah, that's a good question, there, all the homes in Birch Cliff are below the drinking water standards that are established by the DNR. Below in a good way? In a good way, yes. Okay, thank you.
Does this ever end, or is this something we have to watch forever?
I told Reed, that's one of the questions we always get. And I will tell you, in the 60 landfills I've worked on, I've closed one, okay? The goal really is to shrink the costs, every year, get the costs down, to be able to sample a few wells once a year is about as good as it gets. We did close the Wassa complex landfill, but the owner of that landfill paid $5 million to build a soccer complex on it, and then turned it over to the county, and the city still has to maintain it, and they, and so, I don't know, they're really, it's closed officially, but there's still maintenance required on it. The only way to, to close them out, all right, is to dig the whole thing up and move it away, and that's not practical, so.
Okay, anybody else? Thanks, appreciate it. Okay, next we'll move on to a little bit funner subject, not that that wasn't fun. Bonds to Library Board Report with Nancy, or Nancy Miller, our library director?
Yes, I'm going to have Rebecca Ferguson, Vice President of our Board, just talk briefly about the board and what they do.
Sure.
And, I want more, one, two, three, good.
We have several board members here.
You can feel free to introduce them too.
You coming back to the desktop?
Thank you, I am a new Vice President, and a fairly new member of the board, and fairly new to the city of River Falls, and it has been my delight and joy to be on this board. It is a very functioning board, and it, it's a great institution to support, and I hope, I think you'll agree with me on that one. The things that we concentrate on, one, all of us automatically by being board members are advocates for the library, but also advocates for the community back to the library, so that we come in with, what about this, or how about that, or can we connect this way, how can we support those things? That leads pretty immediately to the long-range planning, so that we work a lot with strategic long-range planning, where are we going into the future, in particular, I think this library is particularly connected to, how do we function as a fundamental community center of River Falls? And I think if you're around the building, you'll see that we do, it's a busy place. The, probably the, the thing we spent, we certainly spent time on is, is monitoring the, the day-to-day activities of the library in terms of primarily the budget, some staffing issues, that, that's one of the things that we certainly oversee on a regular basis. We also work, to work a lot on policies, how to, how to look at those, how to reconsider those, a lot of those are needing revisions because of technology, lots of changes with that, because the library really works to stay on top of that. And I think the other thing about the board that we're going to be, we know we're going to be looking at, is that we have a magnificent director, who is talking about retirement. So the other function, of course, will be for us to evaluate and assess what do we need in the next library director, how do we make that transition so that it's smooth, will that affect staffing in other ways, and we will do all of that. In the meantime, our purpose is to support this director in all the ways that we can. So that's pretty much what we do. Questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Rebecca.
So, I'm just going to introduce the members of the board that are here, Rebecca Ferguson is our Vice President, Melissa Wilson is new on the board, we've had a lot of change over, five of nine members have changed over in about the last 16, 18 months. Robert Wing in the back there is new on our board, and then our new council rep is Chris Gagne. So, thank you all for coming now, I have just my annual brief talk about the library, and I wanted to talk a little, just very quickly about providing relevant service for our area. I think everybody, they, they see that we can show our circulation numbers, here's how many books we circulate, here's how many movies we circulate, I can tell you how many meetings we had in the building, but I want to talk about some of the other things that I think maybe people don't quite recognize as much. So, what I want to quickly go through is early literacy, STEM and STEAM activities that we do, lifelong learning, equal access to technology, helping to cross that digital divide, community engagement and outreach, and then what's next? We do early literacy through storytime programs, you will see, this is our, we do them for birth to 23 months, 24 to 36 months, our toddler program, and then our preschool program for three to five-year-olds, they cover appropriate books and activities with basic literacy skills. Ms. Monica focuses on a letter every time, and this is the letter R she has, and the kids do something crafty, and, and they also hear stories and do things so that they focus on that. And then, 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten, which is an independent program where kids read, or have read to them 1,000 books before they start school. And this is something you do on your own, we currently have 250 children enrolled in this, 46 have completed the program, they get a library bag when they start, and a book at the end, and they get to chart their progress, as you see on the little board behind our, our graduate. There are monthly storytime programs that we do in partnership with Jump Start to Literacy, so attendees there not only get the, the storytime program, but they also get free books that they get to take home, so that there are books in children's hands that they take home with them. We also do that with our book clubs for kids, where they get that book, they come to the book club, they get that book club, they can put it on, or that book for each month, and they get to put that on their bookshelf, and these kids are very proud of that, so. Every year we have our summer reading program, this year our theme is Build a Better World, it helps kids keep their skills sharp, I've told you before about the summer slide, where children's skills may slack off in the summertime, just reading a few books every year, or during the summertime helps to keep those skills at level, so that when they go back to school in the fall, they are, were at a point that they left off when they left school in the spring, and we're working on trying to get some other components into this, I'm, I've got ideas for how to do a bit of math, and a lot of our Wednesday programs include some STEAM and STEM activities, we've also got summer reading to help adults read, and stay with it in the summertime, including our now famous book club in a bar. So there are programs for all ages, and we take those programs out of the library and into the community. As I mentioned, we have a weekly program in, on Wednesdays during the summer where kids get a lot of different exposure. This week it's juggling and humor with Paul Holter, he has been here before, he's really a popular guy with the kids. Next week it is snake discovery, so they're going to get some, again, some of that science in there, later on there's arts, there's mad science of Iowa, and magic shows a lot of different things. So as I just mentioned, we are working to do some STEM and STEAM activities at the library to affect kids, this is something we've talked with the schools, they are very interested in us doing this, because it's hard for them to always provide those activities. So, we have replaced some very old computers in the children's room with iPads, they all have educational games, the previous computers had CD-ROM games on them, she tells you how old they were, and we are hoping to expand the number of iPads and, and things, tablets that we have for kids. We have Maker Mondays going, that is hands-on projects, everything from, on Monday, they made, yesterday they made fairy houses, but previously they've also done stop-action animation, and you should really go online to our Facebook page and see some of these videos that the kids made, it's kind of hilarious, some are, you know, little, little, not so great, but others are just amazing. They've done construction projects with that, we have Legos every other Monday, where the kids come in and create and build, and we put them on display so kids can show people, this is what I built, and again, that's building that technology, it's kind of engineering things. Green screen technology was another program, you know, that, oh, and stop action, action I had a little thing that said, do you want to fix, fix your thing, but when I loaded it, and we said no, and apparently that's why my picture disappeared. Anyway, oh, there it is. Okay, another big thing that the library does is provide equal access, we are trying to- We are trying to build, help bridge digital divide in our, in our area. So one of the things we are doing that is new is providing mobile hotspots that you can actually check out and take home with you, they go out for a week at a time. We had five, it was so popular, we now have 10. We also use that when we go out to our poolside book break and to the nursing homes. We are trying desperately to get out to the farmer's market and some other locations, and we will also use those there, because then we can actually check out materials, have people get a library card and everything right there on-site, as opposed to having to come into the building. So we have, obviously, we've had the public computers for years and printers, we have building-wide Wi-Fi, Chromebooks that are available to actually check out of the building, we have a computer lab that's available for use, and iPads. People use these things for a wide variety of activities, everything from filling out taxes, various learning, e-learning, FAFSA filling forms, Skyping with relatives, doing their taxes, homework, doing Medicare and Medicaid forms, and a lot of other things that they're doing at the library, because maybe they do not have access at home, or their connection is not wonderful, or as fast. So it really helps people with distance learning, staying in touch with family, and so on and so forth. We also have, there's Chromebooks that we can check out, we have a lot of different projectors that check out to the public, there are Kindles, we have our new big outdoor movie screen there with Heather, you can see how big that is. And that, it, that is, I think, reserved, we have two of them, and they're reserved for the next month, along with the movie mate projectors that go, that they can check out with them, so that you can show a movie on your barn wall, or whatever you want to do. And there's the lab, portable lab, that are used for everything for, like, computer classes, 4H comes in and does their annual registration in the library, job service has used in GED practice and testing. I think that the city has used them for something that they were doing to help, some kind of a program. And just to remind you that the River Falls Library Foundation underwrites the cost of our technology to the tune of about $10,000 a year. This is not an actual line item in, in my budget, so they provide that every year. Lifelong learning, that's a big thing of mine, you can see there are birdwatching kit, and our brand-new Rockhound kits on the side, other side there. We're also looking into creating some geocaching kits that can be checked out. In the middle there, we have Great Courses, which cover a wide variety of subjects. I was reading ARP magazine, and they were talking about, oh, here's a way to do lifelong learning. Yes, I buy these great courses, I wait for the sales, and they're just terrific. And I thought, wait a minute, we've got them here. So I did a library column on that, we put a display up, and they've been going out now continuously, people are really interested, and hey, it's free. So, something else, we bring in authors that people can meet and hear them read their works, ask, ask questions. A lot of people ask, how do, how do you find an agent? You know, they want to talk to somebody who's done it. And so it's, it's a nice thing for them. Other types of programs, quilting programs. The Antique Appraiser was just here again. Travel programs, guy who did the Ardidirad Trail, and someone else who walked the Camino de Santiago. Things on gardening, on food. Hey, we did a whole program on chocolate. So historical events, we do a wide range of programming to help you find out new things. I love that I work at the library, because I learn new things all the time. And as the years go by, all these things interconnect when we have other programs. It's just, it's, I have the best job in the city. So we've done a wide variety of, of historical events, we've had a Civil War, World War II, the NASA program, the wonderful motorcycle retrospective lumbering, the Voyagers, all sorts of things. The current display, I'm going to talk a little bit about community engagement, we have little golden books down in the gallery. These are the original artworks that were used in books. It's a fascinating and delightful display, I, I suggest you come down and check it out. We do the All School Art Show every year, which gives hundreds of kids the opportunity to have their art on display in the gallery. It is our best-attended show every year. Those kids come in, they are so proud, they bring mom and dad, they bring grandma and grandpa, maybe two or three times. We have our Fall Author Event, we've covered Shakespeare, Jane Austen, Arthur Conan Doyle there with Sherlock Holmes, a number of things, coloring for adults, we've done seed art, just like at the state fair. As I mentioned, we have book discussion groups, we've got seven different groups going for all ages, and also, sometimes those are in the building, sometimes they're out. We even have fun contests, like our gingerbread contest and the peeps. Our Kitty Parade and Games and Petty Zoo are coming up at River Falls Days. It's an opportunity for people just to come and enjoy themselves. As I said, we are trying to get out into the community more, you can see the poolside book break, and we are currently, Heather is going out to three of the assisted living facilities, oh, comforts of home, Our House, and the Kinnick Home, bringing books. People get an actual experience, because she has, they can fill out a card form right there and get their own library card, and check out books. She's got a card full, they can select books, and, and she also does a program for them, either trivia, or coloring, or a movie, or something, and it has been really, really popular. There's a long list here of some of the businesses and organizations that we've been networking with over the last couple of years, there are more, we are trying to reach out to our community and join with them. And looking down the road, we're working on creating a strategic plan for the library. And once we've completed that, we will be updating our long-range plan. Usually I do a five-year plan, maybe we'll only do three years this time, I don't know. And then we'll, we want to finish updating the children's library area. We are currently about to celebrate 20 years in that Union Street building. I started in the old building in 1983, and so that we've already been 20 years on Union is just amazing to me. And I'm so proud of this community for supporting that facility, and supporting the library the way that they do. But at 20 years, we do need to reupholster the furniture, we are looking at carpeting somewhere in the next couple of years, and a new coat of paint. We are, we're going to work on a needs assessment for an auditorium, this is something we've talked about. Is it something that anybody, that people think we need? If we do, what? What kind of things would we do there? We purchased a couple of, three house, three lots now from the library, and what is our parking lot planning? That's where down the future here, we're going to be looking at that and doing more outreach. So as always, thank you for all that you do for us, and we try and do as much as we can for you and for our community. Thanks.
Anybody have any questions for Nancy? Yeah?
You know, I love your presentation and all that you do at the library. I think you've done a great job leading that library, and obviously, when you decide to retire, you'll be missed. One thing I didn't notice was commending your staff.
Oh.
You have one of the best staff in the library that I've seen.
You know.
And I'll give you one clear example, I walked in there this year, I, 34-years-old, and math has never been a great subject of mine, so I walked in there to do a remedial kind of training on math, and was wondering if I should get a tutor or not. Well, I talked to Ken at the front desk, and he brought me right to a book, and that was the book that helped. So I mean, they're very helpful, personable, and.
Yeah, I do have the best staff. I, I have people that have worked there for many years, and they are wonderful, the new staff is also wonderful. Normally, I have our Halloween picture up, and I, I just forgot, sorry. Because it's always entertaining to see how people, that's why I love my staff, they will dress up for me and with me on Halloween. So, thank you.
Thanks, Nancy. Appreciate everything you guys do.
Well done.
And thanks to all the board members, too, you guys do a lot out there, we appreciate it. Next, we'll go on to the minister's report. If anybody's got anything for Scott, or Scott's got anything to let us know, or the city know?
Any questions you might have?
Well, everybody, nobody's got a question for Scott? It's 100 times 40.
Not good at math, you know. Oh, I should mention the open house.
Oh, Glenn Park.
From four to six at Glenn Park tomorrow. If you're unable to make it, one of the questions has been, kind of like, is that my last chance? And the answer is no. There's ample opportunities for people to participate over the next about 18 months as we do that. We are, we are trying to narrow down the location and design of the storm shelter slash pavilion, and also get a good idea of what the preliminary site plan is going to be, meaning how are the different things in the park going to do. But we do have a fair amount of work to do to get the final plans done through, through next year, so keep some more opportunities for people.
Anything else for the, Scott? Otherwise, we'll move on to, let's see, announcements. I got, I'd like the, the council to look favorably on one appointment I'd like to make, I'd like to appoint, I'd like to appoint Denton Anderson through January of 2020 to Historic Preservation Commission.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we approve your appointment.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we're moving to closed session, Wisconsin State Statute 19.85 IG for the following purposes. Conferring with legal counsel for the government body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved to wit St. Croix Valley Habitat for Humanity and the Town of Troy versus the city.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we recess into closed session.
Second.
Christie, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Downing.
Yep.
Morissette.
Yes.
Gagne.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Bierstedt.
Yes.
Okay, we're in closed session.